All right, Mr. Weatherspoon.
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Rowena? That's it here. And then, Mr. Schulman?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Our first order of business is the public hearing 2021-18 R/SPR/CAM 25 Van Zandt Street condominium. We're being asked to do two things, both to approve this project and to, excuse me, to, in conjunction with that vocational trade school, we're being asked to approve within existing structure in industrial number one. Let me explain how we run a public hearing. The applicant will first have an opportunity to present the case for their project. During the presentation, the zoning commissioners have an opportunity to ask whatever questions they feel are relevant. When that is completed, we will invite any public that is attending that would like to comment on the project to do so. We don't restrict the amount of time you take in making your presentation. We just ask that you observe polite behavior throughout your presentation. And you'll only have one opportunity to speak. So we encourage you to get your thoughts together if you're going to comment. And to make sure in that one opportunity that you say everything that you wish to say. Once the public has had an opportunity for input, we turn it back to the applicant to respond to the comments they've heard. And again, commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions. And when that's complete, we will close the public hearing and move on with regard to action. Action on the public hearing, it will be then the next activity. The commissioners are not obligated to make a decision this evening. But they can't, they do have the authority to approve the project or to deny the project. Or if there is some very important unanswered question to hold off until perhaps our next meeting before taking a final vote. Again, I'll repeat, we do have a voting quorum. We need four members of the commission in order to take action on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I need to use myself from 25 Van Zandt Street.
Okay. So Commissioner Wells has indicated that she's recusing herself. That leaves four commissioners to hear and act on the application. And with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Yes.
Before we start, I just have a procedural question that I'm wondering about. It seems to me in the past, when I was on the other side of the aisle, one of the things that the applicant was informed about was whether or not, because of the number of commissioners, they needed a unanimous decision. And I'm wondering, given the fact that Gail has recused, Galen has recused herself from this application, does that mean that the applicant needs all four of us to vote in favor of not? I'm not talking about the zone change or the text amendment. I'm talking about the the actual application for the school.
Well, interesting you should ask at this particular moment. It will take four positive votes to approve the project. And I'd like to note that Commissioner Sapon has just joined us. So we we have five voting members with us for this project. And it will take four of those five voting in the affirmative to approve it.
So I withdraw my question. There's five here now.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll turn it over to the applicant for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and commission members. My name is Tyrone Peck, representing the applicant in this hearing continuation from previous discussion of this matter. When some questions were asked and responses were requested, we did turn in after the last hearing, that is, November 1st, we turned in responses to the questions that were asked at the last meeting that we were aware of. And we received staff comments yesterday and today. So we're happy to try to respond to those questions and give you a quick rundown. I don't want to waste the commission's time, but sort of be as concise as I can and hopefully address the questions which I think the commission may have. One of the particular questions with regard to this particular site is, it's an old site, obviously, constructed originally in the 1920s, 1923, I believe, has been the ability to park the application that we have for the vocational school, as well as the other activities that are in the building. And we spent a lot of time looking at that particular issue. And with with me this evening is Mark Vertucci from Fussin O'Neill, who will address the traffic and parking questions that the commission and staff will have. One aspect of that, which I believe some of the commission members were interested in last time, had to do with an easement, DOT easement along the north side of the property, along the railroad tracks, the Metro North tracks. And there's been a lot of discussion, and I'll give you a very brief rundown, which, from a very long story. Since March, we've been working with the DOT to try to get this clarified. We had, as I, as I sent to staff, a copy of the non-recordable easement. And that that has, was sent to the staff right after the last meeting, I believe. What I have been doing in the meantime is working with the DOT to get a copy of a recordable easement to address the commissioner's questions with regard to the status of that easement and the exact wording and so on. I received today at about 5 o'clock, a copy of the easement document that DOT is processing at this time. They have a process that they need to go through, and I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, you probably realize this. They have to not only create the easement wording, which I did send to staff today as soon as I got it, but they also have to go through the commissioner's office, the assistant commissioner's office and OPM to get the document signed before it can be recorded. We believe, I believe, and can represent to you this evening, that the document that I've sent to you is a document that's being processed now through the DOT process. And we hope that that will be signed, it's supposed to be at the assistant commissioner's office on Friday. Whether it'll be exactly Friday or not, I'm not sure. That's what I was told today. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. Given you copies, as I say, I've given staff copies of that easement document. Their DOT is well aware that this is a desire, that we record this easement document in the Norwalk Land Records, and we're perfectly willing to do that as soon as we receive it. We fully realize that that causes, or at least could cause, an issue with the question. But we, what we'd like to represent is that we have every intention of following through with DOT. And if the commission chooses to act, and we hope the commission chooses to act this evening, perfectly willing to make that certainly a part of the, part of the conditional approval, should that be the case.
Mr. Peck, there's something regarding the easement that I, I think it's important to get on the record. And I think that Mr. Kleppin will be able to respond to it. And the question was whether DOT intends to use any part of that property as a staging area or a parking area during the construction or the reconstruction, if you will, of East Avenue or the Walk Bridge. Because both of those would hinder your ability to move forward. So I, I'd like to call on, Steve has more information on this than I do. Steve?
Sure. And I did follow up with Vanessa Baladares from Public Works regarding this. She put me in touch with someone from DOT who indicated that they do not plan to use that area for staging as part of the Walk Bridge. Eversource will need apparently to get an easement through the property in order to access the rear for some new towers that will be going up as part of their work. But that there won't be any staging of materials or any lay down area on the site during the actual Walk Bridge construction portion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question or a comment as well?
Sure, please.
That easement did just arrive. And when I was turning on the computer to make sure everything worked tonight, I saw it and read it. And I believe that I said fairly clearly at the last meeting that I thought it was unfair that there was no presentation that was made regarding this easement and what the effect of it would have on the parking area. And I did read the easement, and it is what I do for a living. But it's not my job to make the presentation for the applicant. It's my job to listen to it and use my experience to understand. And my experience in reading the easement says that there are certain conditions attached to it and that if the state of Connecticut decides at any point in the future, it can be revoked. Now, I don't know if that's significant or not, because I know nothing of the background of this easement or how it affects the number of parking spaces that are involved. I do know that I read in response to the city's comments regarding the parking that with the additional parking lots across the street, that there was, I want to say there was 10 or 12 extra parking spaces. But again, I don't know what effect, what, what those numbers, how those numbers would change in the event that that easement was revoked. And I, I just don't understand. I'll put it in a different way. I don't understand how I can make an intelligent decision on this application tonight based on, on what we've seen. Because I can tell you that I have no intention for voting for a project, even though I think it's a really good one, that could end up with parking leaking out on the street and interfering with the neighbors. The end.
Okay, I'll address, I'll address what I can, Ms. Rowena. Number one, we understand that the wording that you're concerned about, we have no understanding of whether DOT would ever remove this easement or not. It's their property. They certainly have the right to do that. And I don't think that's uncommon for them, too. I let Mark Vertucci address that a bit more in his presentation as well. I tell you that the easement has been there for many, many years. And as far as we know, as far as DOT has indicated to us, and I've been corresponding with them about this since March, they have no intention of removing it or removing the right to use it. The number of spaces that is involved in this particular easement is one half of 52 spaces. That is, it cuts across, as you see from the site plan, cuts across half of the, the spaces that are there. We, we don't know that they would ever remove it. Certainly a possibility. And that's one of the reasons, for example, that we decided, certainly after the last hearing, to include the properties at 22 and 28 Van Zandt across the street for additional parking, should it ever be needed.
Now, there's one of the- Would you be, would you be willing to have seriously long-term leases or permanent leases that involve those properties in favor of the condominium or the school project that you're creating?
Yeah, that, that was my next point, actually. I was going to say that one of the items in staff's recommended resolution to approve calls for reexamining the parking after a year, a year after this project is approved. We have no problem with that whatsoever. As a matter of fact, it doesn't really make any sense for us, frankly, from an operational standpoint, to have a project or uses that are not going to be able to be parked there. There, there's no question that it's a reasonable, about 800 feet from the, the train station. There, there's some other parking available in the area, not, not just this parking, but obviously some on the, on the, on the rest of the lot, as well as the parking across on, on the south side of Van Zandt. So we're perfectly willing to do that. And I thought that the, the staff's recommendation to reevaluate the parking in a year was a really good one and a, and a way to get an idea after a short period of time of operation, that everything is functioning well. And we're perfectly willing to do that. We think that's a, a good recommendation, a reasonable recommendation. This is an unusual situation. There's no question about it. And the fact that it's taken us this long to get DOT to even give us a copy of the easement that we want to get recorded has been difficult process. But we're struggling to make that work. We think the process, the project still works. And that's, again, one of the reasons why we decided to include the, the properties on the south side of Van Zandt as well. So we think there's adequate room there. And I'll let Mark address the specific numbers to that later on. But that's, those are the reasons why we still think it will, will work, Ms. Rowena.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, I would just like Mr. Chairman, follow up with Mr. Kleppin regarding this proposal. Stephen, are you basically saying that the number of parking spaces would be ticked off as the space is rented and it's conceivable at some point they would run out of parking spaces, but still have more space?
Can you phrase that again? I want to make sure I understand.
You're, you're, you're saying that you want to look at the parking, revisit the parking situation in a year. So what I'm thinking that means is, is that if there is a finite number of parking spaces and each time a space gets used, there's going to be a certain amount of those spaces that are going to be ticked off, ticked off the list, checked off the list. So it's conceivable at some point during the renting process that all of the available parking spaces are used up and there's still space to rent, but there's no parking for it. Is, is that your understanding about what revisiting the parking means?
No, I, I wouldn't position it that way, because I think, so there, you know, I'm going to use round numbers. So they're, they're proposing to use about 150,000 square feet of, of the space. And they've allocated the spaces as they've laid them out on the revised site plan, including the properties at 22 and 28 Van Zandt Street as part of that. So those spaces in totality are the spaces allocated for the project. After, you know, a period of time, you know, as a standard condition, we always put in, like, we want to see a revised traffic study a year after, you know, I, I, maybe we have to check that phraseology a little bit to make sure it's a year after they're fully occupied. Because then I'd like to see what the parking looks like at that juncture. Versus, you know, they, they might be a year into the project, but only have three quarters of the, or half the space, you know, filled out with tenants. So at that point, we may not be gauging what the full approval is. And we don't want to get to a point where we have to try to backtrack.
Let's suppose that they are fully rented. And now you're going to revisit the space or the parking spaces. What, what, what would you do about it? If you didn't like it?
I, I'm almost thinking about it in reverse. I'm almost thinking about it, you know, they have, they, they pledged to provide those lots across the street. But perhaps in the future, they may not actually need all those spaces based on what the occupancy and the use of that, that space is. Because they do have that extra space on the site. And I'm sure, you know, if the school is successful, they'll look to occupy, like to occupy that space as well. Maybe that could be part of the expanded school program or something like that. But I think we have to evaluate what the actual use is. Because it's a little, you know, it's a, it's a use we don't have in our code for parking. So we're trying to apply what we think is a rational standard based on what we're seeing at facilities in other parts of the state and what they're indicating from their analysis. So I think that that's where the evaluation and a post occupancy would have been.
No, I, I understand that. I did, I did read all of the responses from the various parts of the state. And I think out of state, actually, you had some as well with, with schools. Okay, I, I've asked enough questions. I'll just listen now.
I can just plug in one additional thing, in, in addition to what Mr. Kleppin said, Ms. Rowena. Each of the, the spaces that will be used for various school activities will probably have to come and get a fit out permit from the city. So I think that, I, I would tell you that one way to keep track of this and, and the parking itself and the rest of the site is to take a look at, the city staff will take a look at when things come in for permit to see if, if things are adequate with regard to parking and how the site is functioning. So I think that there's an additional check that the city has in its, in its back pocket for maybe, maybe the site gets full, maybe it's 110,000 square feet. And, and the city decides, no, you know, there's really not enough additional parking to, to give this additional 10 or 15 or 20,000 square feet, whatever it happens to be. I think there's a way that the city has to continually check that. So even though the, the, the regulation that's being asked for in the site plan that's in front of you, it's really a maximum of that 150,000 square feet. And really without going into lots of details, I think the city still has the ability to, to check on that periodically. In addition to that, as I mentioned, I think the staff's recommendation for checking the parking in a year will certainly give you a good feeling about whether it's working well or not. And I think there's, there's ways to check that, so.
Well, interestingly enough, your analysis of it is what I was talking about. I, I have been involved with clients that have run out of parking spaces and ended up with, you know, several thousand feet of warehouse space instead of retail or, or residential for that purpose or that reason, I mean. But okay, I've, I've, I've said enough. I don't want to monopolize the topic.
That's okay. I think it's an important issue. And I think one other thing that can happen, too, is that, let's, let's just say there's 10,000 square feet of the building that's still unoccupied. And there are a number of other uses besides the school that could be put in there as well. Could be warehouse, could be small office, could be one or two people in a small office that is running a film company, for example. So there are a number of different ways. It's not necessarily going to be 10 or 15 or 20 students per room either. So there are a variety of different ways that, that the building could be used. It's used in a variety of different ways now. So I think that there's a significant amount of flexibility in the plan that we have and the requests that we've made with regard to the square footage in the building. So I certainly agree with your question. It's, it's an important question, and we, we hope to have it, have been addressed by the revised site plan, so.
I have a, a follow-up question on that for Steve. And that is, if we approve this project at 150,000 square feet and it's determined at some point before they're fully occupied that they are going to have a parking deficit, do we even have the right, having approved the project, to stop its full build out?
That's a really good question. That's kind of why I answered Mr. Rowena's question the way I did. Because I'm looking at the, the, you know, kind of the reverse of it, that at some point we may want to revisit the, whether they needed all those parking spaces or not. I mean, it's, it's, it's really hard to tell, because the, you know, the myriad of different kinds of school uses that, that could occupy that space. You know, maybe, maybe they have like, you know, they're taking 20,000 square feet and they have five students, because it's based on the, the type of vocation they're looking at. It's a little hard to tell, but to, to answer your question, I, I don't, that's why I said I didn't want to backtrack. I don't want to get to the point where you approve 150,000 square feet and you get to 100,000 and you're, you're already at, you know, parking capacity and it's overflowing onto the street. So I think that's, that, that's a critical issue. But that's why I think the 150 gives me a little more comfort. And then tying those two lots together gives me a little bit more comfort.
Just to follow up on that, and this is premature, since we're not at that stage in the presentation. But could we change the language of an approval that would give us that authority? That as we monitor the parking and the number of square feet rented, we, we have the right to stop further development?
It would depend on how you word that. I mean, I think you could, you could put the condition and maybe cap that square footage at a lower number. For now, I think that might be one avenue to explore and then have them come back and revisit it at that, you know, modify the approval to add the additional square footage. You know, that, that's probably the only thing, I, I think from a legal standpoint, the only avenue, I think with a condition that would really kind of not just be something I'd be worried about on, on any kind of appeal.
Okay.
And I, I think it's something to discuss with the applicant, since we're still in the, the public hearing stage. I don't, that's not the kind of condition I'd like to impose after the fact.
Right.
Better to have that conversation.
Okay. I, I apologize, Mr. Peck. Please continue with your presentation.
No, that's, that's quite all right. I'm happy to, happy to get these out now, so we know just what the, the basis for the issues are. Very, very briefly, then, I also wanted to mention that, you know, our review, too, of the Walk Bridge situation indicates that we don't see that there'll be any adverse impact on the site from that particular project either. I know that was a question that was asked at one particular point in time. There were a number of comments made with regard to other site modifications and landscaping in staff comments. And again, we have no, no problem with, with those as well. We certainly think that the staff's recommended motion for, a draft motion for approval covers those and satisfies those. And we're happy to work with the, the commission prior to the final permitting on that as well. So I guess with that, I'd just like to, to stop at this moment. Certainly ask Mark Vertucci to make his comments, whatever they are, with regard to the other staff comments that we received with regard to the parking and traffic and, and site plan changes that the commission asked about. So.
Yeah. Thanks, Tyrone. Good evening. I'm Mark Vertucci, Senior Transportation Engineer and Vice President at Fussin O'Neill, Manchester, Connecticut. I did, I thought what I would do is kind of walk you through briefly the planned modifications we made to address the staff comments. If I could share my screen. Okay, can I do that? See here. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
I will zoom in. But before I get into this, I just, I don't want to recap the, the traffic and parking study again tonight. I did address those at the prior meetings. But just to recap on the parking, you know, we had done a shared parking analysis. And just to refresh your memories, the findings of that analysis based on ULI and IT methodology was that we needed anywhere between 346 and 350 spaces on the site, depending on the methodology you used. The, what we have now on the site and with the use of 22 and 28 Van Zandt, the two parking lots across the street, we have a total of 387 spaces provided. So we do have, you know, a surplus anywhere from, you know, 30 to roughly 30 to 40 spaces versus what the analysis indicates. So it's, yeah, the analysis was done pretty conservatively, you know, for the workforce training center, the 150,000 square feet and 300 faculty. We had assumed one parking space per person. So, you know, it's pretty conservative. We did take the 20% transit credit, but we're, you know, we're conservative with this analysis. So we're, we're comfortable, this is, you know, what has been provided on the site is enough. And that we've got, you know, quite a bit of a surplus here, should, should there be more needed than we had originally projected. So I'm just going to some background noise there. Zoom in here a bit on the northern part of the site. On the northern part of the site, uh, most of, you know, what we uh. Changed here, modified to address staff comments were uh, you know, related to the. Access driveways in the site frontages. Um, so here in the northeasterly corner of the site, um. This is the northern driveway on uh, Osborne Avenue. And the current driveway was very narrow, only about sixteen feet wide. Not really wide enough for two-way traffic. So we have widened this to twenty-four feet to allow. Uh, better two-way flow. It lines up a little bit better with Rowan Street. Uh, we have shown a modification of the retaining wall here and a new crosswalk at Rowan Street and a, and a pedestrian uh. Ramp there. Uh, we have added landscaping along uh, the site frontages here. And along the, the front of these uh, loading dock. Uh, the, there's a four-foot sidewalk proposed to be reconstructed along the length of uh, the frontage. Um, we have consolidated the curb cuts, which was a big, big comment that staff had on Osborne. Um, we have five today. But as I zoom out a bit here, you can see uh, we have proposed to consolidate them to three. And one of them is the loading dock here in the middle. Um, so really, there's only, there's only two access driveways to the parking areas. The one I just talked about opposite Rowan and then. These three southerly access driveways have been consolidated to one single drive in the, in the center. And then, you know, cars can come in, uh, circulate around here and park in these spaces. This lot will be completely reconstructed. Um, these uh, twenty-four foot uh, areas where the old uh. Driveways were are basically turnaround areas where vehicles can back up. And there's proposed to be some wooden uh, guide rail there uh, you know, to prevent vehicles from accessing that. Uh, there's some landscaped islands in here. And as we head down to Van Zandt Street.
Lots are um, disconnected, correct?
They are currently disconnected, correct?
Yeah, that's something I, if we can, as you, sorry, the voice in my kids are loud.
That's right.
Uh, one, my only question as we go through this is like. It generally feels like people are, I wonder how could you prevent people from getting stuck going to. The different lots that are generally going to be fuller. So like, I don't know if there's anything with the rental or like certain. School folks park in the bigger lot because you know, they're guaranteed to have spots. The thing I'm a little worried about is. People start to go to some of these other spots and like, then you start to get mass chaos because you can't really circulate well. You can't exit well. They don't connect and all of a sudden you have people. Spilling out all over the place. I don't know if you've thought about that or if you have a reaction to that. I, I don't know if it's a real problem or not either. But that's just when I'm looking at this again, it's one of the things so stuck in my head with this. It's like, you have all the spots. But there are one, two, three, four, five. At least five different parking lots or actually six. And so there's a very. Diffuse way of, of getting around and, and to get around is not on the site. It's. Through the, through the three streets that you have.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good comment. And I think um. I think the uh, you know, the TMP staff had, had mentioned that, that there, there really needs to be some uh, wayfinding signage added. Uh, to the site plan and we, we are showing some locations there for wayfinding and, and you know, they want to see more. And I think uh. You know, when we develop these plans further into construction documents, we need to uh, we need to add that signage along the roadway frontages and along each of the lot entrances. To specify. Um, you know, who's, who's to park where. Uh, and I do think that, yeah, you know, if there's say an office use and there, there's going to be some office uses here that are non. Not related to the workforce training center. You know, perhaps we designate these spaces on Osborne for certain offices or certain uses in the building and sign that in front. Um, and then sign the larger lot, say for the workforce training center. I think um, you know, we need to, to work that. Work that out with the uh, the applicant and um, and come up with a. A more comprehensive wayfinding signage plan as part of the uh. You know, as part of the final plans that we, we prepare. And I do believe that maybe in one of the. Draft conditions that Steve had. Had uh, written up, but. Um, yeah, that's a good, that's a good comment and something we will be addressing.
Mr. Rituji, this, this um. This lot and the other two lots are. Uh, fairly tight. I'm, I'm wondering. If you've made accommodation for um, snow storage.
Yeah, um, you know, I think uh. I, I, I'm not sure if our Yato is on the call here, but um. I, I would think um, you know, he has a better idea of, of where the uh, how, where they're pushing the snow today. But we have, you know, what we're proposing here really isn't. You know, we're not. The general parking areas are, are the same as what they are today. So I think the uh. You know, what they're doing today, they would likely continue to do. I'm assuming in this lot here, they've got to remove the snow. Um, there's really not, not a lot of area to push it. Um, you know, we're up against the building here. You're not going to want to be, be pushing, pushing snow there. I don't know, Mark, Mark, are you on the, I think I saw you on the call. If you have any remarks to make on that.
Also, I remember reading Tim also suggested that you get rid of that loading dock. Um, because the truck will have the back off of Osborne into the lot and that could affect the flow of traffic. As well as widen the sidewalks from four feet, I believe, to five feet. I mean, what does that applicant think about? Those.
Yes, I, thanks for reminding me there on the loading, loading dock. That is one comment that we, we, we could not address. Um, you know, that's the internal building, you know, uh. Would have to be revised to physically move the loading dock away. So. Um, we were able to reduce the curb cuts from five to three, but you know, taking the loading dock out. Moving it elsewhere on the site is, you know. Really out of the scope of this project. This, this dock has been here for many years. It's been operating. Uh, fine, you know, this vehicle basically would back in, but then it can pull out, you know, forward manner. Um, you know, I looked at the crash data. There's been no, no issues with any uh. Safety issues with this driveway um, over the years. So it's, it's kind of akin to a, you know, a parallel uh, parking space at the downtown street. You know, a car's got to stop. Put his directional on and, and back into the space. It would be the same thing here for a. Uh, for a truck, a small truck pulling it, you know, backing into the loading dock. So, you know, that, that is one comment we, we were not able to address. But I think. Everything else that, that they commented on, the width of the sidewalks, you know, we can, we can absolutely increase this to five feet. I think the DPW comment had asked for minimum of four, which is where we came up with that, but. You know, there is space here to widen the sidewalk another foot and both of them stands in. Um, so, and just, just quickly moving down here to Van Zandt. Well, I mentioned it. Um, so we are showing a amenity zone, streetscape with street trees. Uh, this is another. Uh, staff comments. Um, the four sidewalks just mentioned will be widened to five. And there's a, like a gravel surface that will be maintained here between the back of block and the. In the front of the building. Uh, we are showing the, you know, these are the two parking lots across the street. Um, that will be used uh, for uh, auxiliary parking. There's forty and fifty spaces respectively in those. And, you know, not much change here to the large lot, the four-point lot. Um, you know, we, other than the, the wayfinding signage that I mentioned, uh, signs for passenger loading and unloading. We're proposing to remove a couple of spaces here in the northern portion of the lot. This is to enable uh, better two-way flow. Uh, through here. And uh, you know, we have added a few parallel parking spaces here on the, on the north side as well. Um, but that's, that's the gist of the uh, you know, the site plan modifications that we made. Um, we did receive, as Hiram mentioned, some additional comments from staff today on this plan. And, you know, and looking through them, I think every. One of them, except for the loading dock, I think we can address. All of them um, when we proceed with, you know, final detailed uh. Uh, plan preparation and construction documents. We could, you know, address those as a, as a condition of approval. Um, so I don't, I don't have any, anything further on this. If you have any, you know, questions on, on anything else from the traffic or parking or the, these, these modifications, I, you know, we could certainly uh. Uh, answer them.
Chairman, if I could, I'll finish up two seconds. Appreciate, appreciate the commission's attention to this. I think that this um, plan is um. Addresses the, the comments that we've gotten from staff to date. We, we certainly are willing to. Continue to work with the commission and, and the city. With regard to any of the comments that were made with regard to. Tree plantings, tree removals, permits that are needed for that as, as part of a hopefully a, a, a final approval. Um, this is a, a really, in, in my opinion, as a planner, a unique opportunity to reuse. An existing old building, which is quite large for the site. There's no question about it. But the fact that we've made it um, comply with, with almost all the comments, except for as Mark said, the loading dock. We think is a really good um, way to proceed with using this particular building for this type of use. Along with the uses that are already there. So we're hopeful that the commission would. Continue, consider the draft approval motion that, that staff put together. Um, any other questions that you have, we're certainly willing to address them and work with the, the city as this moves forward. And we're really hoping uh, very mightily, given the, the fact that this. Whole process has been pushed back by a variety of things, including the pandemic uh, for about a year. We're anxious to move forward and we certainly hope that the commission can see fit to do that. So any other questions, I'm happy to answer and um. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this.
All right, um, with that, um. We'll open it up to the public should there be anyone who wishes to comment on this. Um, Brian, can um, you explain how people can um. Uh, access um, the ability to comment?
Sure. So if you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak on behalf of this application. Uh, you can just use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. Um, and with that. Um, and then just to say your name and address and I bring you over.
Uh, I see a, a Virginia Tartaglia.
Yes.
You wish to comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, can you just give us your address, please? We.
Thirty-two Van Zandt Street.
Thank you.
There's a little delay in your speaking, so bear with me. I have a small business and I also live. In the same address as my business. Do you realize how congested Van Zandt Street is already? With trucks, delivery. They don't go behind his building where the docks are. There's trucks parked on the street, blocking our driveways. And our businesses and unloading to deliver at twenty-five Van Zandt Street. The parking lot on the s- right side of me that is on the corner of Van Zandt Street in Osborne. Do you realize Osborne Avenue is a one-way street? On the corner of Osborne and Van Zandt, there's also the school buses for the children. There's also wheels buses. There's plenty of business trucks that are making deliveries. That are congesting our street. Route one thirty-six, we are. And then with all the. All the things they're doing on East Avenue, the bridge. It's just too much congestion on Van Zandt Street. This project can be taken to another area in Nowak that's less traffic. And you're gonna designate signs? Who says these people are gonna follow the signs? They're just gonna park wherever they can. And the turnaround in, on Osborne, it's a one-way street. You could only go down. Or come out one way.
Is that it, Ms. Tartaglia?
Well, besides the pollution, I mean. Do we really have to have all these vehicles? In this area? With the business and the residents? I just disagree with this project. It might be a great idea, but it could be, bring it to Norton's property. They have plenty. Parking and plenty of. Non-congestions over there. There's, I mean, everywhere you look, they're putting up apartments and condos in our area. I mean. Look what they're gonna do to East Avenue. With the bridge work and then. Bank taking over new apartments. And now they're dealing with another bank at the end of. Van Zandt Street that they want to put apartments up. I mean. It's hard enough to get our driveways now. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about this project?
Sure, someone more.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Um, it's Diane Cece, um, East Nowak Neighborhood Association. And um, thank you all for this. Um, I thought it might be a full presentation tonight, but it seems to be a recap off of the. Um, prior zoning commission. Um, I want to say a couple of things and. I hope you'll bear with me, Chairman Shulman, because I had to scribble a lot of notes tonight as I was listening to the applicant. Um, I had reviewed this again on the weekend in anticipation of the hearing. But then when I actually went in onto the computer to get the um. The link for the Zoom, I saw documents that were dated and posted today. And um, it's actually the documents that contain transportation, mobility and parking comments. That were um, addressing many of the same concerns that ENNA has. And so I really literally only had a few minutes. Um, as I logged off of work to take an opportunity to review those. So. Um, just ask you to pardon me as I kind of go through the um, scribbles of um, what Mr. Peck had presented. Um, I'll start off by saying, um, I do agree with the concerns of Miss. I think the last name is Tartaglia, the lady who just spoke. Um, and I would share the sentiment of this is a very desired use in Nowak. As a whole. Um, something that's a trade school and vocational school in Southern Fairfield County, I think is desperately needed. Um, I've said from the beginning that um, ENNA had viewed a list of possible. Um, candidates for um, or tenants for this and. We're not quite sure of um, if this is really what we had in mind when we were thinking of vocation and trade, but. We understand the applicant has the right to. Um, to rent out to whoever meets the criteria that falls under your zoning guideline there. And so um. I do also want to agree that it would be our first choice and ENNA has expressed this in the past. That something like this would have been an excellent consideration for Norton. And those of you who have been around for a while may remember that the, um, the GIB school was there at one time. And um, I think that would be a better location. However, uh, Mr. Baum and twenty-five V N Zant are looking to repurpose this building and we understand it. And in our short list of the types of things that we would desire, this is certainly one of them. So, um, we appreciate. Um, that they're looking at this for this location. Something maybe um, shocking that I can say to you is that. I basically agree with Commissioner Rowena made a whole bunch of points and I agree with everything he said tonight. That may be a first right there, but those concerns. Um, especially now because I'm seeing some of these that were just, um, I'm, I'm actually understanding them today. Based on the TMP um, comments. Um, I share his concerns with those and I'm really. I, I think the other thing that I would say that maybe is not shocking is that I'm a little bit confused. Because um, one of the things that I'm looking at with the parking is the idea of two lots that are across the street on the southern side of the end there. It seems to me that every time I took a look at this application in the past couple of years, there was only consideration of those lots. Um, for lack of a better term is overflow. I think Mr. Peck may have called it auxiliary. But when I look at the TMP notes and I'm trying to struggle to understand the parking requirements as a whole. I don't see how this project can go through without designating those as part of the same. Um, primary parking that the, that the site plan itself has. So that may need some clarification there. So that may need some clarification there. And if that is the case, I want to raise another concern that that has already been raised and just reiterate it. One, that actually re-upped the curb cuts for this plan from the five that got cut back to three, and now actually brings it back up to five curb cuts. And so when you have these peak times of traffic coming in and out, you have those two southern curb cuts where cars are going to be taking left and, you know, lefts and rights out onto Van Zandt Street, which I think is going to create chaos. To Ms. Tartaglia's point, I'll add on to that as well. I think our commission maybe, I I don't know legally if you can consider this or not, but I think that you have to consider the fact that the Walkbridge, East Avenue, Osborne, Fort Point, and Vansant project is six years worth of construction and detours and rebuilding of those bridges and everything. And so to have this in operation and impact Osborne, especially at Rowan. And look, I'm not gonna miss an opportunity to say this either, Commissioner Schulman. The two thirty East Avenue application literally put a parking garage on top of the sidewalk there. That creates havoc on its own, much less cars, you know, entering and exiting at that first curb cut that aligns with Rowan. And I'm a little horrified that this plan may still have trucks of whatever size actually having to back in at that location. Sorry, I'm just gonna scribble through my notes here. I do want to understand, and I guess staff may be able to answer this. I hope Mr. Kleppen will answer it. The point about the fact that this is not a single trade school. This is not like a trade school that, I forget the name of the big one that's up in Bridgeport, where you have a trade school that controls all of the different classes that are offered, and it controls the hours of operation. This is actually, you're designating as a trade school vocational use, but you're gonna have a multitude of tenants. I think one of the last lists we reviewed is maybe a dozen or more tenants. And I think that is a little more hard to control. And it does raise the issue of if you then have parking that's not adequate, are you going to leave a legitimate business owner who's approved for this use with space that actually can't be rented? Because the parking has created a situation where they can't offer that space out. And I think that's a little bit more difficult than having dealt with one. You know, I think a lot of people think it's one trade school, but it's not. It's a use that's gonna have multiple tenants, and those are harder to control, even though we understand early on from Mr. Baum that all of the conditions that that you guys are looking to approve this under would be built into, I guess, the actual leases with these tenants and hopefully enforced. The, when you looked at the the last time that I was able to look at the traffic analysis, and they were looking at the prior uses as being more of a burden in terms of traffic on one thirty-six, just want to remind you folks again that that building hasn't been used in that capacity in those uses for a long, long time. And so we haven't been subjected to the type of full rent out of the office space that that building would have been allowed for today. I also want to point out that if part of the uses are still daycare, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to look that up, but if it is still in there, I would suggest to you that daycare has the same impact at peak at peak, what do you call it, peak commuter time? Maybe outside of the hours of the school, but people who are dropping children off and picking children up are doing it at the same time that people are commuting to work, typically on their way to work. When you look at the parking, I also wonder, I mean, you're not going to have a situation with daycare where you have a parent or a caregiver dropping off a two- or three-year-old at the front door of twenty-five Vansant. Okay, what you're gonna have is you're gonna have someone who requires a parking space for however many minutes that, you know, would take to be able to access the building and drop off a child or pick up a child. And I'm not sure that that's accommodated anywhere as designation for the parking only or in the wayfinding. And also, I'm not sure if I saw anything designated for staff-only parking, which may, if it's not, that may create another problem. One of your commissioners asked about the fact that the parking is so tight in these lots and the fact that the separate lots could now be opened up to accommodate those reduced curb cuts. It is going to create chaos if people go in and circle around looking for empty spaces. And it's not going to make it easy for them to back up and get out of there. The same, that same situation exists across the street at the two lots at Southern Vansant, only worse. I don't I don't know how they could possibly manage that. What I'm picturing in my mind, Mr. Schulman, is that people will be queuing on the road during the the times when different classes may be getting out, and they're queuing on the road, waiting for current students and staff to leave so that they can go in and find a parking space for the next for the next hourly courses there. The, the curb cut I already mentioned in relationship to Osborne, I do agree with the that part of Osborne is two-way there, but it's very, it's a very narrow street. And I think there's already going to be issues there related to the walkbridge construction and issues with people being able to safely turn left and right out of Rowan, and then the garage is right on top of the sidewalk. And to the other lady's point, the other part of Osborne is entirely one-way, and I think that's going to create chaos as well. Somebody raised the point, I'm glad you did, because we often bring this up about snow storage if they don't intend to have snow removal. I'm familiar with those lots, and I think that is going to be a problem, so I hope staff will come up with a solution for that. The, I'm trying to follow the the conversation on the DOT easements. And I just want to say, in my experience, in with the DOT, in probably fifteen, twenty years, that things are written in stone until they're not. We've referred to contracts and projects of theirs where they're literally written on ice cubes. So the stipulations that are in those easements today, when they start looking at possible staging, I still have a concern about that, and I'm I'm not sure what staff can do to kind of tighten that up. The other thing is, is that the way that staging usually works for either construction equipment, supplies, or labor is that the actual contractors who bid on different components of all the Walkbridge and East Avenue work, they actually contract staging areas on their own. You guys may have heard ENNA talk about this in the past, where they'll go out to private property owners, negotiate very often lucrative rates to get property owners to allocate part of their property for staging. And there's really no consideration for what that means to the residential or budding businesses as well. So I would ask staff and the commission to consider whether or not that's likely to happen for what you're talking about is the existing DOT easements right now. Hang on one second. I'm just taking a look at my final chicken scratch here, because I know I only get one bite at the apple. I think, I mean, I think that really kind of covers the main points. You know, I just want to close with two things to the to the commissioners. This really hasn't changed from the first conversations that we've had. ENNA, as you know, or you may not know, met with the applicants early on because we really wanted to come out and support this application based on the suggested use of trade and vocational. We do think it's needed, and like I said, it is on our shortlist of desired uses throughout Nowak. And I think there's some, you know, but possible, you know, sites within East Nowak. But many of the same things that that I'm raising here, and in the review of all the items that were highlighted in red that you just got today from TMP, are, you know, some of the same things that we've been raising from, you know, day one before the thing got pulled and reworked. So I, we're not generally privy and now assess of Commissioner Schulman again of Director Kleppen. ENNA and other stakeholder groups would like to be privy to resolutions and condition lists ahead of the public hearing so that we can also comment on those. Because I'm not sure, you know, how much teeth your condition list might have that's going to address the the concerns that Mr. Rowena mentioned, the other commissioners mentioned, Ms. Tartaglia mentioned, and that ENNA continues to mention. Thanks. I appreciate the time and letting me struggle through the the notes here.
Thank you. Any other comments, Brian?
Unless Mr. Baum would like to speak, that was everybody who's here.
Lou, if I have a question, do you want me to hold it to after the applicant replies to the public?
No, but I'd like, just in just in case there's someone else from the public who wants to speak, just hold it until then.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Baum, if you'd like to speak, the raise your hand features at the bottom of your screen, but obviously, you're the applicant, so. All right, go ahead, Lou.
Okay. Go ahead, Nick, ask your question.
Two things. One, Brian flagged to me, I wasn't at the meeting, but I read and read the minutes, so he asked me to put that on the record. And the second thing is, is if we can take a couple of minutes after you've answered the questions of the public, if we can just go through the change of service levels as a result of the traffic, if you can just look at that one more time, I would like to just throw it on the screen, and if we can just walk us through that, that'd be really helpful.
Okay. Mr. Peck, we'll turn it back to you to respond to the public comments.
I think many of the comments, I understand that there's a lot of traffic in the area. There's no question about that. We have no intention of narrowing the right-of-way widths that exist there now. One thirty-six is not only a bus route and a busy regular traffic route. It's also, believe it or not, a bicycle route that goes through there. I'm not sure how many people ride their bikes there. But there's a variety of traffic types that are in there now. There's no question. The ability or the the purpose that we included twenty-five and twenty-eight Van Zandt Street in the project was to provide that additional surplus parking that that Mark talked about in his presentation. And we do believe that that will provide the adequate surplus, and we think that the staff's requirement and recommendation that we check that within a a year after CO is appropriate. I think that there are a number of things that are basically going to be the subject of the operational procedures that that Mr. Baum has at this building. And whether there's one school, one workforce training center, or two, or three, or five, I I don't think that's been decided. I'm not sure there's going to be ten or twelve. Obviously, it's going to have to do with the capacity of the building, the capacity of site, and the ability to adequately park it so that people that are paying to go there have a suitable experience to go there. The daycare operation that was mentioned is not a daycare center for people to stop by, drop their kids off, and and go to work. The daycare is, as I understand it, has been explained to me, and as far as I know, in the past year, I've been working on this, is an operation where people that work in the building will have the opportunity to have their kids in daycare right in the same building where they work. So in addition to an additional level of comfort that they'll be nearby their kids, it's also a convenience for the people that work there would not require any additional parking spaces once the the people are there. We do think, you know, I had an initial meeting with ENNA, and and I thought that we explained many of these situations to them. We understand that it's a busy area. There's no question about that, but we worked very hard to make sure that the parking and traffic and circulation, number of curb cuts and so on, address all the staff comments that we were able to address. And as Mark said, we're certainly willing to to work on the the TMP comment as as part of the final approval. If Mark wants to address the level of service, that would be fine, and happy to happy to have that. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer, as chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Hiram. Yeah, and I'll add again, and those TMP comments from today, the ones in the red, you know, there's, there's nothing other than the loading dock, there's nothing on there that we cannot work with them to to address, just to just to reiterate. Most of them are minor design-related signage-related items. They're not, you know, larger-scale layout and circulation and access items at this point. On the traffic side, just to recap, I I think it's been several months since as I presented the findings of the of the study, but just to give you the, you know, the gist of it on the on the operational side, we had looked at the intersections on Van Zandt. You know, the traffic signal at Osborne Avenue is actually has been recently replaced. It's a fairly new signal. It is operating efficiently today. The operations are actually Level of Service A, which is the most efficient operation on a report card-type scale. So you know, that enters, the the traffic is flowing there in the peak hours. The intersection of Van Zandt at Fort Point Street, there was more significant delay that we observed there. However, we did recommend signal timing modifications there. So just to, you know, tweak the timings, tweak the green times so that we can restore operations to its current levels. So that's that's what we're proposing with those mo- timing modifications. The level of service will be restored to current levels, which are E in the morning. That's where we have some of the delay. And this level of service B is in boy in the afternoon, which is which is pretty efficient. There were a few other intersections that were noted to have some some delay, and that was Fort Point at South Smith Street, and also Fort Point at Osborne. These are both unsignalized intersections. They're both always stop-controlled intersections. And in the build condition, we had we had some level of service drops at the Osborne and Fort Point. We we had E, E and F operations on the east and westbound approaches that occurred only during the peak hours. And then we had one approach at Fort Point and South Smith, the westbound approach that had a more significant delay in the morning peak hour. So these were certain approaches. They were constrained to only the peak periods. This is not an ongoing congestion thing that's occurring all day. It's occurring right when the computer traffic spikes. So, you know, we looked at the volumes. There's, there's nothing, the volumes at these intersections don't even come close to warning a traffic. No, there's, there's just not enough sustained demand there. High enough volume over a long, long enough period of time to warrant a signal. These intersections are fairly tight. There are right-of-ways right up on them. There's a railroad overpass, so there's, there's nothing we would propose there for roadway widening. You know, we wouldn't want to do that. We want to widen the road, which, you know, it makes it more unfriendly for pedestrians and bicycles.
Remind me, which one goes from E to F? Is that the Fort Point and East Ave intersection?
It was Fort, no, it was Fort Point and Osborne. So we we are, you know, it's right north of the site, so there will be some increase in kind of northbound rights there and westbound lefts coming into the into the property there. But again, you know, there's, there's, there's nothing there that, there's no mitigation we would recommend at those intersections. I know your your traffic and parking department reviewed the traffic study. They did not have any comment or suggest mitigation at those those intersections. The other thing I want to point out is, and I mentioned this before, our traffic study was extremely conservative in the volumes we used, because we ended up, unfortunately, when we 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 started this work, it was right during the heart of the pandemic. So the traffic volumes were way down in the spring of twenty twenty and early summer. So you were not able to actually go out and count the site driveways to determine what the the development is currently generating today, because it wouldn't have been an accurate count. So what we did is we used to store accounts, and we grew them, which is very conservative. I'm pretty sure those counts are are higher than what's actually out there today. And then when we calculated the the traffic from the projected uses of the site with the workforce training added them to those existing volumes, we were adding them to volumes that are already higher than what's likely out there, and that probably already had some of the existing site traffic in there, if that makes sense. Maybe a little bit of double, double counting of vehicles there. So it was very, very conservative, which is why I think the condition that the traffic condition that Steve had suggested to have the traffic looked at again a year later, I think that would be beneficial, because we could actually get some, you know, real counts out there real counts out there when the traffic has been restored to whatever the new normal is. And I'm very confident those volumes are going to be significantly lower than what is in the traffic study now, and the operations likely significantly better.
What, remind me, what's the definition of peak? And I guess in the evenings, the more pertinent one right here, because the morning seemed to smooth itself out. Was that five to six?
Yeah, it's typically in the four to six range, so peak hour, you know, highest peak hours about 4:30 to 5:30 roughly.
And how do you account for the two southbound lots left, able to go left and right? And how does that factor in? Because that just seems to me is just potentially chaos inducing. And I'm generally like, I love the notion of it being a vocational school here, so I'm trying to wrap my head in this and be like making sense of it. So if, if, if you can help me understand how the fact, how the analysis factors those lots being pretty much, you know.
Yeah, well, those, those lots, they're actually being used today, there's traffic going in and out of them today. But when we initially did the study, we, that we were just not proposed to use those two lots, so we actually sent the majority of our traffic out of the other driveways, so we had.
Mostly the four-point driveway, right? Because the other two driveways are the Osborn driveway is pretty negligible relative to the other.
Right, right, so we, we, we had more of a load on those, those drives, so it's, this is.
The traffic study is, it doesn't take account right now for those additional lot, southbound lots, is that what you're saying?
Right, what I'm saying is, yeah, that the other driveways that we are kind of overdone for traffic, and then the two southbound lots would have been a an unsignalized analysis, we would have done 40 and 50 spaces, you know. You're not going to have, you're not going to have as much flow out of those as you are with the other lots, for sure, it's unsignalized. You know, you're going to have probably mostly right, right turns out of there. You do have a, you know, the Osborne signal there, you do have the signal constantly changing phase, you get the gaps in the traffic between those two signals. But, you know, those lots are, they're there today, they're operating, this isn't a new, you know, a new operation we're suggesting.
But those lots are operating today more as, aren't they like car lots? Like where people are not coming, going, it's more like leaving your car there for a couple of days, right?
I believe maybe one, one of them, yeah, it's more of a, of a sprig. I'm not, I'm honestly not sure, but we were down there, we did see quite a few cars parked in those spots.
And Steve, by right, this, this complex, like what, what's the parking look like, what's the do we have a sense of like, what an example of an of right occupant would be in those parking numbers?
I don't know that number top of my head, but I mean, I think you could look at the, Brian, maybe you could help me with the math part, but if you had, you know, a fully occupied building with office, you just need to take, take that square footage and then divide it by the the ratio for that office use. And that would tell you, I think, what they could, and I think they may have done that in their initial, and part of their initial analysis would be, that's kind of maybe like the, the worst case, best case scenario, so for the worst case from like a traffic and parking demand load scenario, in best case from, you know, they've got a fully functional building with.
Yeah, I'm trying to just to walk, I'm looking at some of the back stuff, I'm trying to find that, like, I think it seems like it's roughly like 150 versus 300, something like that, does that sound roughly right? I'm trying to gift the two here, and that's just what I'm trying to think.
Yeah, I, I, if I can dig back into their report while, you know, the Q and A is going on, and see if I can pull that out of there.
Sorry, I monopolized the log here, thank you for, for that.
Question of Mr. Peck. I unfortunately did not hit my unmute button quick enough before the public part of it. I wanted to ask you, and I want to ask you again, because I, I just listened to what you said before, and I don't understand. What is the relationship of the two extra parking lots to the application right now?
They're included as part of the application for parking as part of this application.
So you don't necessarily need to use the terminology overflow or auxiliary, you're saying that they are actually included in the application?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
One, one small point I would make is, well, someone else is thinking of another question, is that there were comments made on the sidewalk width, and the sidewalk width shown on the site plan is four feet, I think some of staff, some city staff has asked it to be five feet, especially along Van Zandt, and that, that's certainly possible. It depends on how much the commission wants to screen the front of that building, so an additional loss of another foot of planting area there will mean that slightly smaller vegetation has to be put in there in order to survive for any length of time, so whether you use columnar maples or something like a columnar oak in front of the building to give it some height and some, some mobility, the sidewalk is slightly wider, then there'll be a little bit less area to plant landscaping in there. The plan still does show landscaping, and we want to do a good job on that, I just want to put that, let the commission know that, just, just to make sure you understand that.
We have other questions for the applicant? If not, Mr. Peck, any final comments?
Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the commission. Many questions were very thoughtful, and I appreciate the opportunity to explain them. We're certainly hopeful that the commission will follow staff's draft resolution to approve and move this forward. We're anxious to move forward, and we think it would be in everybody's best interest to do that. Thank you very much for your time, and greatly appreciate the opportunity to present again, and hopefully answer any questions that you may have had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then before you close, Lou, we just have to read the planning commission memo and deep memo into the record.
Oh, okay, I guess.
If you're choosing to close the hearing.
I, I'm going to ask you to do that, Brian, since our secretary has recused herself and is not available to do that.
Sure, so I'll pull up the planning one, I think Steve has the DP one, one second. All right, and then so if you hear any additional commentary, that is from my daughter who's sitting on my lap. So at their August 11th, 2021 meeting, the planning commission made the following decision. Be resolved that number 2021-18R/SPR/CM25VANZSTREET kind of minimum proposed amendments to section 118-100 and 118-700 of the Building Zone Regulations to allow trade vocational schools as defined in the I-1 zone be approved. Be it further resolved that the reasons for this action are to implement the Plan of Conservation and Development, Chapter 1, 1, Chapter 3, Goal 2A3, Study Industrial Zoning and Update Zoning and Lineage Regulations to Allow and Encourage a Wider Set of Uses in Targeted Industrial Zones Focused on Market Opportunities and Warehouse and Logistics Brewing and Distilling Artist Art, Artisan Uses and Other Light Industrial Uses That Do Not Have Detrimental Externalities on Nearby Areas. And number 2, Chapter 5, Goal 4A, Attract the Higher Education Presence to Downtown Norwalk. Staff comment is that while this is not essentially downtown, additional higher education is needed. And then be it further resolved that this action be forwarded to the Norwalk Zoning Commission.
And the deep statement?
Hopefully Steve's pulling that one up, I think he's.
Amazingly, I found it just in the nick of time, so give me one second. Do you want me to just read it, do you want me to put up on the screen? I can do either one. Why don't you read it? Okay. Sure, this, this is to the Norwalk Zoning Commission dated August 25th, 2021 from Marcell, Marcy Bayland for Coastal Planner with Connecticut Deep. Subject, Zone Change 118-100 and 118-700 Vocational and Trade Schools to Allow in the Industrial One Zone. To your commission members, thank you for forwarding the above referenced Zone Change Referral to the Land and Water Resources Division of Connecticut Deep, which we received electronically on July 23rd, 2021. Our office has reviewed the regulation change for consistency with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act and find the proposal generally consistent. Those comments are made in accordance with CGS Section 22A104E, which requires notification to this office at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the hearing thereon. Please contact me with any questions on this or any coastal management matter you may have. That's that.
And we did refer it to both Harbor and West Cog, and both had no problems.
Okay. And with that, we'll close the hearing and move on in the agenda. And that is action on the above agenda, who wants to start the conversation? Richard?
Yes. I am still troubled with the parking situation, and I've been thinking about what Steve had talked about revisiting the application later on. And it sounds like to me that we could approve a certain amount of square footage. And what I was thinking in my head was, if we had a number of parking spaces that would definitely take care of a certain amount of square footage, that we could approve that amount, and then revisit it later on to see if more square footage could be included. I know that sounds kind of complicated, but I'm just trying to think of a way for me to be comfortable to approve this so it can move forward, because as I've said in the three or four hearings that we've had on this, I think it's a great idea. It just has some vagaries to it, and I think Mrs. Tartaglia's point of parking on the street and blocking her driveways, et cetera, is, is something that we've got to be sensitive to, to make sure that the parking that is being proposed is sufficient. And I, I believe I'm satisfied now with the, the answer about the extra parking lots, but I also believe that if that wasn't in the resolution, I don't recall seeing it there, that there should be some kind of a long-term relationship between those parking lots and this project. I know in the old days that it used to be a long-term lease, and there was no provision about what happens at the end of the lease, and I'm not so sure that that's the case now. But if it isn't, it should be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anyone else wish to comment on this? Nick, I see you unmuted, so.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I sort of feel the same way as Commissioner, you know, on this one, like it. I'm struggling because the notion of adding, having a vocational school come into the area is really impactful and important, and a great use of space like that, I think on its face is sort of like, I don't have any relationships of that. I just have, like, it's a unique spot with the, how it's laid out, and it's just I'm struggling on the parking, I'm struggling on the traffic, and it's rare that I get stuck on that traffic for, for, for the past couple of years, just knowing, just, you know, driving on these streets, we all know, like, Van Zandt is becoming more and more of a through fare, and will continue, I think, as the upcoming years occur, and I'm just worried that you know, hearing that the lot across the street, you know, I, I always get stuck, because when we hear 50 spots, it's at one point, it can feel like a lot, and then in big numbers, there seem like they're not a lot, but then all of a sudden we get more traffic, and it's, I always struggle on like, what's actually true on, on these matters. I've, you know, we've rarely had a traffic analysis saying, you know, the proposals is too much traffic, you know, I mean, like, it's just so like, I would take that with a grain of salt, I take, and then, and then seeing like the left, right out of those spots, and then if you have people coming during peak hours, like, it just feels super chaotic. And I sort of really like Commissioner News creativity of like, is there a way to slow roll it to see what the actual patterns are? Because if I remember correctly, we have, there's not a lot of comparable for a space like this that we've seen that we can say like, oh, this just follows this model, and like, where I remember, you know, I think it was a year and a half at this point, asking just like timing of the traffic, like, when do you expect students to be there? And we, I don't even think we've ever gotten a full, like, answer, because we can't get that full answer at this point in time, because you don't know who the, it's a lot of chicken and egg of this situation of like, if all the students are coming at like, one in the afternoon, traffic is really not an issue. But we really don't know that, and, and, you know, so I, I'm I'm finding myself stuck, that was a long way of saying, I'm finding myself really stuck on this application.
Do we feel like there's any way to carve out a piece of it that feels like it could be moved forward?
Well, I think what, what Richard has suggested may be a way of addressing this.
Yeah.
I mean, I think what, I share the same concerns, I think what mitigates in favor of it for me is a building of this size, whether it's used for these trade schools or for some other use. If fully occupied, and of course, the, the applicant has a right, if, particularly if we turn them down to use this for some other purpose that's permitted under zoning. Could be as problematic or even worse than what's, what's being projected here. In addition, you know, we're dealing, we're dealing with an old building, we're dealing with old infrastructure in terms of the the parking lots, the turning movements and so forth, and there's only so much that can be done to mitigate it. So, you know, finding a way to control and monitor how much traffic is generated by controlling in some legitimate way, how much of the space is permitted to be rented, seems to me a reasonable way for us to approach it now. The, the developer may feel differently, of, of, of course. But we have to keep both the concerns of the developer, as well as the concerns of, of the public in mind in reaching a decision.
Lou, what would be a worse situation here?
Well, I think a worse situation might well be some use, maybe, maybe an office use, where everyone comes at about the same time, and everyone leaves at about the same time. One, one of the advantages of what's being proposed here is, as a school, people can be coming anytime from early morning into into the evening, I'm sure many of us had, you know, classes in college that may have started at five or even six, six o'clock at night, not ended until six or seven o'clock at night, which is past the peak. I, I remember as a senior, basically having a half-day of school, I arranged my schedule so that my classes ended at about 1:00, 1:30 in the afternoon, which is nowhere near the peak. So I, I see that as some advantage, how it's going to play out. I, I don't think any of us know, I don't think, I don't think the developer knows, because he doesn't know who his tenants are going to be.
Right. That was helpful, Lou, thank you.
Other comments from commission members?
I agree with Commissioner Rowena and Cantor them, basically about the concerns. So it's a good project, but a lot of unknowns.
I think if if we could approve even a substantial portion of it, it's going to take a while to lease this out. So I don't see it as a, you know, necessarily a detriment to the developer at all, but certainly a consideration to the neighborhood to see how it's going to work. I mean, if we, if if they feel that they're close on the parking with a hundred and fifty square, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. If we said, you know, okay, let's start with ninety thousand square feet. And rent it out and see where we are. We don't have to wait a year. If they rent it out in six months, it could be revisited before that, before the leases are actually, or before the space is actually fit up and occupied. I think that I I would be very comfortable for voting for that and if at the end of the day, it turned out that all of this parking worked. I was thinking about what you said, starting your classes and getting done at one. I did the same thing, only I started at one. So there we are, we're both getting there at different times. So that that would be, that would be my preference if it's something that, you know, Steve thinks that he can work out and if the applicant is is okay with that, perhaps maybe they might want to consider giving Steve some time to revise a resolution and we could hear it at our next hearing, which is only in a couple of weeks from now, I think.
Yeah, you do, you do have that option to vote at your your next meeting, which I think is December eighth, I think that if I recall correctly, so I think.
That's a special meeting.
Yeah, so we we could, you know, the obviously the public hearing is closed, so we can't solicit feedback from the applicant on that any further, but if if you did do that, just keep in mind the only kind of like caveat with that is if you did cap it at whatever number it was, ninety, a hundred, every you felt was appropriate. That you really need to see that, not necessarily when they're leased, but when the classes are occupied and really functioning at their full level because, you know, it's going to take a period of time for them to fit the space out for each tenant. But then whatever, you know, say there are individual operators, it's not all one operator that's running the entire facility. Those individual operators have to market their program, get students in. You know, I don't know if they run on a, you know, depending on the school, they could run three or four times a year, they might run annually, they may run biannually. So you need to get them up and running in their schedule, it it takes a little while to get, I would imagine, full attendance at some of these classes. I don't think they'll open up a welding school next week and then all of a sudden be completely full. I I would think that kind of takes a little while to build that brand and get them recognition and out there to get, get the students that you're anticipating.
Well, Steve.
Steve, what I was thinking about was, you know, for instance, I had a client that that was going to open up a a space. And that space would accommodate a certain number of employees, so that was the parking that she had to have for that. And 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 yes, it took her a while to hire the employees. And she ultimately ended up deciding not to have this many, but if somebody leases a space from Mr. Baum and then comes to you for a fit up permit. You're not going to give that permit unless they have the parking for the number of students and teachers that they say they're going to have, right? I mean, isn't that how it would be determined?
Yeah, and let's, it might be good, Brian, I don't know if you can, you have the ability to pull up the text amendments because I I want to just. It's been, you know, this has been a very long process with this application, so I want to make sure that, you know, what we actually tied the parking to, did we have a ratio of students to one pace, space per student or something like that to Mr. Rowena's point?
Yeah, because I think it's it's both a combo of the of the parking, but also Steve, what you're saying also on the operation and the staffing flow. So it's a two part thing.
Yeah, I'm going to try to.
Yeah, give me one second, I'm pulling it up.
And I think to to Mr. Scholman's point, I mean, unfortunately, it's been a little bit. And I understand there's extenuating circumstances regarding this, but it's been a little difficult to pin them down since we first started talking about this is probably two, three years ago now about exactly who's going to be in there, when and why, and how many students they anticipate. I think that that's prolonged this process quite a bit.
I think it's this one.
Brian, can you make that just a little bit larger? Thank you.
Okay, so we added a definition and I think we added a section, I don't think we added, did we add a did we add a parking standard, Brian?
Not that I'm aware of.
This is the comparison to other communities and how they handle vocational or college school. If I'm looking at the eleven fifteen memo. We need to bring some of this into that, is that right? Is that what you're saying, Steve?
Yeah, I think to to where Mr. Rowena was going is if if we're looking at some kind of checks and balances along the way, we need to kind of determine, I I mean, I think if you cap it at a lower number to start, you can evaluate. You know, well, there's two ways to look at it. If you said, you know, you you can build out a hundred thousand square feet and then once that space is occupied and and fully functioning, we'll we'll run another analysis of the uses of the parking lot and look at the traffic counts again and then see if you can up your ante. Another, another option would be to, and I think this is more to to Mr. Rowena's point and you can, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as individual tenants come in, evaluate the parking demand based on, you know, what their program is. I E. number of students, how many classes per day, you know, what space requirements they're actually taking up. So that's another approach you could take if you didn't want to say you have to wait the full year and then be fully occupied to really evaluate what the load is on on the site and on the the street network. So I think those are the two options.
That's, that's exactly what I was saying, except I I have to admit, you probably can't tell on the screen, but I'm sitting here with a bit of a red face in the sense that I have spent all of my mental energies focused on the school application and and you know, I don't want to say that I forgot we had a tax amendment, but didn't, didn't focus on the fact that we hadn't come up with a parking regulation yet, so the, what I was asking you to do was a little difficult.
Yeah, and the parking is is very tricky because I think it depends. If you just look at that, that chart that was up there, there's not a a really great applicable standard that's like accepted or widely used. And then, like I said, I think it's all very, you may have like, you know, based on what we looked at, some of the other models from like Porter and Chester and what the other folks are doing is depending on the type of user that's in there, you're going to get a wide variety of the required parking. So some like auto mechanic space might have a huge square footage, but a low student count, whereas you might have a more of a clinical type classroom area where you're going to get a lot more students in a smaller area. So
Well, one of those, one of those parking comparisons that you had in the chart talked about. I I think talked about the commission making a a decision as to what the park, yeah, let me see that. No parking standard for vocational schools, instead considered other use where commission determines parking standard based on applicant submission. I mean, would it be conceivable to have the applicant at this point say, I've got three hundred and forty six parking spaces available. And let's start off with giving a permit for eighty thousand square feet and the criteria being, you know, if the parking is, I mean, you're going to, if the parking is adequate in the sense that it's not causing a disturbance to the neighborhood with overflow parking, that's kind of a vague thing to look at, but I think it's the most important one as far as the neighborhood is concerned. That doesn't interfere with traffic and doesn't interfere with their use of their properties.
Well, I.
I think that's the.
Well, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I think that's the end goal, but I think it would be better to tie that to like an actual like, what we would do in a, you know, a real world situation is. They say, okay, we've got now whatever that number is, we're fully occupied on what the the square footage you gave us. And we've, we've taken parking counts on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday of, you know, this, this week at nine AM, at eleven AM, two o'clock and five o'clock and at no point in time was our site more than seventy five percent occupied. And then you can say, okay, now that makes sense and you can kind of extrapolate what the what the, you know, total load might be if the site was a hundred and fifty thousand square feet fully occupied or an extra thirty thousand square feet occupied. I think that that's something that's doable.
My, my, my concern with that is it's it's a very, that's a very conservative approach. And I would prefer an approach that that, the second one that was suggested, which might be a little fair to the applicant without adversely affecting the neighborhood. And that is as they get tenants, we should be able, they should be able to tell us how many parking spaces each of those tenants is going to require. That would allow them to rent up as much space as their parking will allow more quickly than following the first alternative. Because I I think the first alternative is a very slow, very slow process, waiting until it's actually occupied.
Lou, with that approach, that accounts for parking, it doesn't account for traffic, correct? Because they could, they could meet, in that approach, they could have all the parking. But we have no control that as everything starts landing at, you know, you know, the same time. To deal with the traffic, that's my concern with the that approach, is that right?
Well, that is, that is something that we should take into consideration, not only do we, do we ask for the number of parking spaces that a given contractor is going to require, but also what are the hours that over which students come into class, you know, they, does everyone come at nine AM? Or do you have a fifty percent coming at nine and twenty percent coming at twelve and another thirty percent coming at three?
And then an assessment of that on the back end, it's actually playing true, there's like, of course, you know, you can say whatever you want to find.
Yeah.
And then Steve, how do we handle Norwalk Community College? What are their, like, do they have special parking requirements or they zone differently? I don't know if that was a good comparison for this.
They're in the state, they do what they want.
That was going to be my answer.
And it hasn't worked out too well for the neighbors, I guess.
Yeah, the the state is pretty notorious for doing what they feel is appropriate. I I was going to recommend, you know, I I think we can. I I usually I'm pretty good and Brian's good at putting conditions up on the fly. This one's a little more complicated and I don't want to get it wrong. So I I think what I would recommend is that we, you know, you obviously the applications are both closed. Don't take any action on either tonight, we at our, your next meeting, we can put the matter up in the discussion again. We can, you know, based on we did get the T and P comments, so we can further make sure they were incorporated properly into the resolution. And then draft a couple of different conditions, conditions for your consideration regarding build out as it relates to traffic demand and then also parking demand. So we can put those together with some different ideas and concepts and then you guys can pick and choose and then we can take action at your next meeting. That way the applicant knows we're we're kind of at the finish line and has something to that that's probably they can act on.
Steve, two, two questions about this. I've been concerned since day one about changing the regulation and approving, approving that. And then for some reason, this project doesn't go forward. Then we've, 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 we've made, we've made a change apparently for no reason. Is there some way of tying them together so that if we approve the two, if the project doesn't go forward, the change in language doesn't go forward?
Well, so if you end up ultimately, you have to take two actions and you have to, you know, vote on the text amendment. Obviously, if you vote no on the text amendment, there's no point in even voting on the second item, but assuming you voted positively on the text amendment and approved the special permit application with whatever conditions you ultimately decide, that use is then on the books. So that that's applicable and somebody could seek a special permit anywhere else in that zone for that use. So I think that's like probably the first question you need to ask yourself, that this could come up at another property and I don't know, know if that's necessarily a bad thing, because on each location, you'll have to go through the same steps and discussions that you're having now, you know, is the, is there adequate parking to accommodate whatever they're proposing at that location? And what are the traffic impacts that could be realized as a result of that? So it would be the same exercise. So I think that's the first question, I think you've kind of sort of answered, but not formally, is that you like the idea of a vocational school and, you know, it does make sense if we're going to have. You know, we're obviously we're undertaking the study of the industrial zones and we're hoping we see more of those kind of uses. If there's schools that can pop up and feed those uses that might make those areas more attractive for those kind of projects to go forward.
The, the second question I had procedural one. And that is, the meeting in December is a a special meeting. Are we allowed to add agenda items to a special meeting?
Yes, because the special, the special agenda can have as many items on it as you want. You just can't at that meeting, once that agenda is finalized, you can't change it. So it's, it's not like you can bring up other items and you're really stuck to your agenda.
Okay.
And I don't anticipate more than likely, I I think, you know, we're way jumping ahead of our scheduling discussion here, but I think you also have another meeting of just the zoning commission scheduled for early January, your normal meeting, because the combined commissions doesn't take effect until January eleven, so you will have another meeting in early January. So my suggestion was going to be for the two meetings you have scheduled in December to keep those agendas just to the items on point and then throw the minutes and everything else ancillary off to that January meeting and just deal with it then.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with being suggested and that is that the staff will further massage this and come back with recommended resolution at our next meeting?
I certainly am.
Okay, the one thing also if staff could think about if any additional language is needed for those other mods of like in perpetuity or something of those natures as well, I don't know, I I think there's some looseness there that people commented on that maybe did to just. Of like in perpetuity or something of those natures as well. I don't know, I I think there's some looseness there that people commented on that maybe did to just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I we will look at that again and I I and I think. And I don't want to believe in this, so I apologize, but one thing I was thinking, they may get to the point where they don't need those lots anymore for. The site and that's, so we want to be able to have flexibility, but I think. Making sure that the flexibility is on the commission's terms and and not on the.
Right.
And also presumably they're gonna have a definitive answer by December eighth from the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, assume, right, if that document gets filed or not, it sounds like that's the last step.
And I think somebody needs to to address, I know I said this before. But somebody besides uh when I was Michael Gale or me. Needs to address what's the effect of that easement is gonna have on on that parking lot. Because it's not, it certainly wasn't clear to me, because I don't have any historical background on the title of that.
Not do I, I don't think I ever done a search of that. Um but it would be good to get an explanation, like how many parking spaces that easement will affect.
I I think it's the fifty spaces. I think that's the number that was on the survey. Um.
That's what I thought, but um they were indicating this evening that it was half that number.
Well, I think they're saying it's half the half the the dimension of the space. If you look at the map, like half the, it cuts through the middle of the stall. So that that, you know, presumably presumably they could put parallel spaces back on their property solely. They. Obviously would lose probably two thirds of the number of spaces. Um I think as well. With the state, I don't think you'll ever get that level of surety that, oh, we're, they they, right now, they have no plans, they're telling us they have no plans. I'm gonna recommend that's all you can go by and not ever say that.
Yeah, Steve, I I I'm not saying that, you know, I'm expecting when this easement comes down, even if it's recorded, that it's gonna give us any. Clarity as to its duration, because it clearly says that it can be canceled at any time by the state if they feel like it. What I think that we should know is what happens if that happens? And like you just said. It's going to affect half the area, but it could be two thirds of the parking spaces because of the the. The size requirements of a parking space in the in the back out area. So that that was, that was the point that I was trying to make. I already know that it's not going to be permanent, whatever this is, because it can't be.
Yeah, I I mean, this does come up a lot and. Usually much smaller scenarios where the state does take land, like if they're doing road widens or. Bridge widens or something, they do take land and end up rendering uh properties areas nonconforming and.
But that's, but that's, that's when. You don't know that already. We know it already, you know? And it's not a condemnation, they could just say, okay, it's over.
To move, to move this forward, uh do we need a formal action, Steve, or uh is our discussion sufficient?
No, I think you're just continuing that you're, you're, I believe you closed the hearing, so you know, you haven't, you're keeping the item open.
Okay, fine. We ready to move on? Okay, we'll move. We'll move Galen back in. Uh. And um Steve, you were going to discuss the fee schedule?
Yeah, and there's really not much to discuss. I I plan on it it'll be on one of your next two meetings. I have a, I'll have a new fee schedule proposed. We haven't. Um touched our fees in almost at least four years. Um and. You know, and we kind of kept them down because we weren't sure what the COVID uh situation was gonna do to construction and obviously. Seemed to have the reverse of what everybody thought was gonna happen, so. I think it's about time that we uh raised, raise those and look at those holistically. So we're starting to do that now and we'll have numbers for you to look at next.
Okay, and will you also give us uh some comparison figures to other uh communities?
Yeah, I have somebody working on that now, so that'll be kind of the first step.
Okay, great. Um. Uh next item is uh the schedule which Steve had sent out. Uh for uh the coming year. We don't know. How many of us will be uh continuing? But apparently Steve needs to submit a schedule, so we need to approve it. Um I I I checked the dates against uh all of the um. Uh usual holidays and it doesn't seem uh to interfere, so. I'd suggest. Uh that unless uh someone has uh a particular concern with a particular date. Um that we uh simply just do a voice vote on this.
I did modify September first, move to September eighth. Just to let you guys know.
Oh, no, I can't.
Uh. Can I have a motion to uh approve uh the calendar for the coming, coming year?
Don't move.
Okay, Michael moves second. And Richard seconds. Let's just do a show of hands. Um. Uh all in favor?
All right.
All right, it's unanimous.
So just one quick question, did the uh reference on that to. Uh Zoom or council chambers mean that there is a possibility we're going live again some at some point?
As a placeholder. I I I don't know.
I mean, I've I've also asked uh the question if 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 we go at some point, if we go live, um do we go back to our seven o'clock meeting uh time and? There's no answer to that currently uh either. Um we just have to play.
Is there, I I don't know how this would work, but is there any possibility to go live and Zoom? Let people do both or either one?
That that's a a very difficult uh thing to accomplish and I've I've seen that go wrong a couple of times. Uh where you run a hundred meeting. Um. I I certainly uh would prefer we not do that, that we do it either one way or the other. Um which means we wait until everybody is comfortable going live. Um. And um uh item C, planning commission roles and functions. Um I, you know, I'll I'll just mention again, because I don't know if everybody heard this, but. We we go out of business as a zoning commission. Uh early in uh January. Uh the mayor will be appointing a new combined planning and zoning commission. And uh I'd remind you if you wish to serve on the new commission. Uh that uh you let the mayor know that with um. Um either an email or a letter or a phone call. Um. Because uh he's probably thinking um uh about that uh right now. Um. Because although it doesn't happen until, what, the second week or so in uh January? Uh it still needs council approval, so. He he needs, I think, to make his decisions. Um likely uh in uh December. Um. Steve, do you wanna uh go over uh uh the uh plant, the 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 whole purpose of this is. As an introduction, um uh hopefully, at least some of us will be on the new commission. And that being the case, we should have some idea of how the planning commission operates and what it does. Um I will mention that there was a planning commission meeting, uh I think it was last week, which I monitored. Uh so that I could get some sense of uh of how they uh operate.
Sure, so.
Go ahead.
So I put, I I sent this out and it was really like the. Quick and dirty PowerPoint presentation and I thought, I didn't think we were gonna be uh as long with that with that application, so we can go as quickly and. As long as you'd like on this item. It was kind of meant to do um. Just give you a kind of a brief overview of some of the items that the planning commission. Has kind of uh on their workload that that will come into the combined commission workload. And I I have no intention of reading all these to you, but just kind of give a brief. Overview on them and I did provide the links to the the statute or the. Section in the the city code where you could look this up a little further. Um the first one, and and this is a kind of a very. Simple one in many regards, it's uh eight twenty-four referral. And what these are is this could come from a a city agency. Oftentimes, they come from. A public works department uh or sometimes from the law department or it could become from uh Rex and Parks. But like a a very couple of easy examples to think about is. Um say there is a road without sidewalks and the city wants to improve that road. Um and by adding sidewalks or there, another. A classic example is the city is going to sell a piece of property or perhaps even buy a piece of property. And that, part of that approval before the city counts, uh common council can approve that. Is that the the planning commission would have to make a finding that the um. Uh improvement, in this case, it could be the new sidewalk or it could be, you know, the selling of the property. Is i- is consistent with the uh plan of conservation and development. Um and so typically what happens is someone comes, you know, the the. Agency, whether it's DPW or whomever, comes in and makes a presentation and indicating here's what we're doing and why. And then they tie that back to the plan of conservation and development. To indicate why that that this project is consistent with that. And and most of the time. The, you know, the, an individual sidewalk may not be indicated in the plan of conservation and development, because that's. Um. You know, sometimes a higher view than the the granular level they're seeking, but usually there's a tie in in the plan itself to say, you know, improve sidewalk access, improve. Uh pedestrian connectivity or something along those lines where you can make that justification. That um that approval has has already been looked at. In addition to that, a lot of those items may have already been contemplated within the capital budget process. So you may have seen that already, so it should be a good indicator that this is not something just kind of. Being pulled from left field. It's something that the city's been thinking about in its um master planning. A- any questions on eight twenty fours at all? I know I'm going quickly and I plan on, we'll we'll revisit this again once the. You know, we kind of understand where the the bounds of the new commission are gonna go, but just wanted to go through these kind of quick.
What is, how many of those do they get on average?
Um that's a really good question. I think. They probably get Brian Krickman for long and we do have these numbers we, and I'll, I can get you that. Because we did, we put the memo together for the the kind of, kind of the idea of merging the two commissions. We we ran all those numbers. And I think it it comes out to maybe like one and a half a month, something like that.
Yeah, we got about twelve this year.
Okay, so even a little less.
So this would uh simply represent um one more agenda item on a uh meeting agenda.
Yeah, less than one of one of, yeah, one per month, not one per meeting.
Hmm.
I asked this before, but with some of these uh separate sort of discrete. Things of the zone that the. That the commission did that we don't do, the planning commission did that we don't do. Would there be any way to set up subcommittees to deal with it?
So, yeah, and I'm gonna get into that in a little bit, because I think there's one area where you definitely have to. Um. The the next one is um subdivisions and. Brian, if you have those numbers, I think there's less than one per, I think it's one every. Maybe we did six last year.
Um, yeah, that might be generous too.
Yeah, and I think it might, I think the number is four. So if you think about Norwalk as a whole, Norwalk is ninety-five, ninety-eight percent built out. So when this city sees subdivision applications, for the most part, they're very simple two lot subdivisions where somebody's taking like. A half acre parcel and making two quarter acre parcels. Um. The good news with subdivision applications is they're probably one of the more simple applications that a land use agency deals with. Because um. If 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 that. Property has the requisite acreage, the requisite requisite frontage on the street. And, you know, there's not gonna be a massive uh drainage problem as a result of a di- an additional lot being developed. The the commission really has no choice but to approve that application. There's really no leeway. Built into the statute or the case law to say, I don't like the subdivision. You don't have that authority to do that. They kind of the. The case law is, okay, you're really making sure that the boxes are all checked. That the applications um meets all the minimum standards and they've complied with everything. You know, there are some other. Small things like I mentioned sidewalks, open space requirements that can be built in. And the other thing to look at could be flooding, but that's a really rare occurrence on these applications. And at the bottom, I put the full link into um. Eight dash twenty-five, which kind of lays out the subdivision process. And then the link at the bottom is the length of the subdivision regulations. One thing Brian, Michelle and myself had talked about. Is when we get applications coming in, and I think this is probably just a good practice for us to follow in general. And it will be helpful for the um for the the zoning commissioners when they're dealing with new. Planning applications that they haven't dealt with and vice versa on. Um. Applications that planning commission members haven't seen before, like special permits, is for us to really lay out. The criteria that you're looking at as well as a statutory reference that goes with that. So it hopefully provides a much clearer picture on things, because I know you guys are kind of used to the special permit criteria and the site plan issues. But not so much some of these subdivision applications. But all in all, it, you know, like we said, the the numbers are like four a year, so it's, you're dealing with. One every six meetings or something like that. You'll see a subdivision application and. Obviously, I think before they get to you, they'll be pretty well vetted. Um, this is something similar to how it's handled with an eight twenty-four and I think with the new process. Of how the planning commission is going to deal with. Capital budgets, it should be a little more streamlined, so it's kind of. You know, you know, special appropriation and certain capital requests are gonna come to you. That haven't been vetted, so the idea is that there there might be like an expense that pops up. That wasn't in part of the capital budget process and if that amount exceeds ten thousand dollars. The commission's gonna have to make a determination whether that's, you know, uh that expenditure is lined up with the with the P O C D, so it's very similar to an eight twenty-four in that regard. Um and we don't get a lot of these either, because the idea is that if. If the capital budget process is done correctly and. The requests that come in from the departments are consistent with the P O C D. You know, the only items you're gonna see are items that are kind of out of the blue. Um unforeseen expenses that couldn't be accounted for, so it's just another checks and balances approach approach. In the uh, you know, overall city spending process. Um. And this is a change and I kind of highlighted the one area in red and this is kind of where I think uh Galen was going. Is, you know, the 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 two areas that the zoning commission hasn't had a. Which would be a departure from your normal workload. One would be. Excuse me, I'm yawning, uh the capital budget process. Um and the second one would be the the the, you know, prep preparation of the P O C D. Luckily, the P O C D is only. Once every ten years, so we have about. Four or five years before we really need to dig into that again, so I'm not gonna spend much time talking about that. But the 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 one area where it's gonna be an additional workload. And unfortunately, this year, you know, since the commission's emerging effective January eleventh. You're kind of jumping right into the middle of the capital budget process. Where January and February are kind of the two busy months for the planning commission. So that what happens typically is all the departments put together their capital program for the year. And they have to come in and present those to the planning commission as well as going to B E T and then to common council, et cetera. But the 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 planning commission in the past had prepared their own separate capital budget. We've kind of eliminated that step because. You know, in reality was things changed by the time they got to the mayor who has to prepare his own capital budget, so you know, largely. The the those requests kind of. You know, faltered by the wayside a little bit, so now I think what we're going to do, which I think is a much more. Worthy exercise for everybody's time is that the combined commission is going to have to make a determination. Which will streamline those capital requests that I talked about. Um to streamline that process by saying all of these. Proposed capital expenditures have to line up with the plan of conservation and development, so. Uh you know, my department on on occasion does put in capital requests, so we have. Put a process together with the um. A finance department where all the requests that funnel in from the departments, they have to state. As part of their requisition. as part of their requisition where these line up with the P O C D. So all the P O C D codes are already built into this application process. So the departments have to identify where these line up. Um, P and Z staff sits in on the initial reviews on these and we can kind of you know, guide them through the process to say, well, wait a minute, this really doesn't line up. But more than likely, we try to get them to line up and have enough catchalls in that process to make sure that the requests are appropriate and kind of meet the city goals as outlined in the P O C D. So to, to Ms. Wells' point specifically, I think it would be a good idea that the combined commission set up a subcommittee of the, uh, combined commission to look at these capital requests. And that's going to probably involve three separate meetings with the city departments, when each one of those meetings will probably be a two to three hour meeting. So that, that, that's just something to put on everybody's radar who might be interested in, um, looking at that, but that would probably be a separate subcommittee who would look at these, attend those meetings and then make the recommendations back to the broader commission, um, on those, um, excuse me, on those, on those individual recommendations. And then those would go back to the mayor's office. And it, you know, as well as the, the, you know, the commission saying, you know what, while, while these items are all deemed to be consistent with the citywide plan, um, we, we would like to prioritize these areas because we feel these line up with the goals as we've outlined in the P O C D. And, um, i- if there were things that they were removed, for example, from that request, the, the council could override those, but it would take a super majority of the council to do so. That was kind of a quick overview of kind of some of the things you'll see once the commissions are combined, but we do plan on, um, going through these again, as well as sending out links to the planning commission meetings where they've gone through some of these, so you could look at those individual applications and get you those materials. So you have a chance to kind of look at the materials and the application, um, how it went through that process to get a sense of some of the questions that they asked and, and some of the items that, that, that did come up. The last thing I'll say is the, um, the subdivision is the only one in there which is a public hearing process, the eight twenty fours or not. And the, um, the, you know, those capital requests over ten thousand or not, the, the, um, capital budget does require a separate public hearing again, so that that could be done through that subcommittee. That's a process you'll have to work out kind of early on, once the commissions are combined. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that might have come up during that quick presentation.
Okay. Steve, a- a- any other comments?
No, just the, uh, I just mentioned last night, we had the first meeting of the, uh, industrial waterfront study. Uh, I think it went pretty well, uh, good discussion back and forth. I, I, I'm, I think it's going to be a, 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 a good exercise, because I'm, for myself, I'm learning a lot about the businesses and the interactions of the different users in the harbor. So I think it's, it though even, who knows, there may not be like a, aha moment in the plan, but I think it's going to be a very informative plan on, on how this actually functions within the city.
Uh, something I'd like to bring up, I, uh, asked Steve to send it out to everyone. Uh, we received, um, a request from ENA to hold off on acting on, um, uh, the East Norwalk, uh, plan. And I thought we ought to at least, uh, discuss that briefly. Um, I think it makes no sense. We have, um, all of us uh, been working, uh, with, with Steve and the staff on this over a period of months. Um, we've had, uh, input from, uh, uh, the public uh, and we'll have further input uh, at, uh, the, uh, uh, final public hearing, uh, on it. Uh, to, uh, delay it essentially means to start the process all over again. Uh, in part, because it's going to be a new commission that, uh, we're talking about. Um, and that just doesn't make sense to me. It seems to me we are more than familiar enough uh, with, uh, this plan to, uh, reach a, a reasonable decision that, uh, we think is in, uh, the city's best interest.
I couldn't agree more. And the public has had numerous opportunities for input, including in the original planning process. Uh, ENNA was involved in, from the very beginning of the planning process. I was involved in those first meetings before I turned that over to Stephanie Thomas, because I didn't live in East Norwalk and I thought it would be more productive to have a zoning commissioner who did live in East Norwalk, sitting in on those meetings. But it was a very, it's been a very detailed, very comprehensive process. And I think we're ready to go forward with it. And to start all over would be a shame.
And you're talking, you're talking about, um, uh, the supplemental study that was done to develop uh, this. This actually began with the P O C D?
Yes.
We're basically implementing the recommendations, uh, of, uh, the P O C D. Is there anyone that disagrees, that feels we ought to, um, uh, start this process all over again sometime? Well, who, the, the, the new commission, uh, should start this process all over again, uh, sometime in, uh, January?
I don't, I don't think that we should do that, but I, I did, um, agree with one of the points that, um, Ms. Cece raised, um, about the, um, my God, I forgot what they're called, the, the, the bonus points you get for certain amenities that you do. Um, I, I think that, um, when we, when we meet again on the, um, whenever that's scheduled for, that at least having, I, I, it would be easier for me if I had a little more clarity as to how that was going to work. That's, that's my only comment.
Yeah, well, there's an opportunity. There's another big hearing.
I'm not saying that we should postpone it. I'm, I'm just saying that I would, I would like to see, um, something a little more clear to be voting on as far as the amenities are concerned. What, what do you call that, Steve? That?
The amen, so there's a, the amenities are?
The, the ones that give you the extra, um.
Yeah, the amenity points.
Density, amenity bonus points or something like that, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so there's.
I think unfortunately that was, uh, the meeting, uh, that you weren't able to attend where, uh, we went over that in some detail.
I was there for that. If I wasn't, then I apologize, but I thought I was.
There's nothing to apologize for.
I'm happy to go through. I mean, if you want to chat about it, I'm happy to do that. Like if you have specific questions, I'm happy to do that, um, offline.
I support still keep moving forward with, um, what we have done so far.
Okay, I mean, it, it, it seems that, uh, that, that appears to be the, the, uh, the, the feeling of the commission. Um, that, that we, we need to complete this process um, and do it in a timely way. All right, uh, with that, uh, approval of the minutes of November fourth, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Um, Richard moves.
Second.
Michael seconds, uh, all those in favor, just raising your hands. Okay, uh, that's one, two, three, four, five in favor, um. Uh, I can't see Marcella, but she wasn't at the last meeting, so, um, she would have abstained. Um, good. And finally, unless there's, uh, something else that, um, anyone wants to bring up, uh, will be a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Richard moves and Michael seconds. All those in favor? Okay, I see a lot of hands going. Everybody, that's good. Uh, see you all in December. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Take care.